Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 21st, 2020 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Hello Commissioners, hope everyone is doing well tonight. The first order, our first up for tonight is the approval of our minutes from October 7th, 2020. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of October 7th, 2020 as written to the record.
Second?
Moved in second. Commissioner Wessel?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn?
We're going to abstain.
Okay, and I'll vote aye, so that passes 401. That takes us to a tree removal waiver for ENV-8637-2020, Lark Ken Apartments Tree Removal Variance for 105 North Summit Avenue in the CBD Central Business District Zone against a tree removal variance, and presenting from staff is Bridget Kent. Well, good evening, Bridget. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening Commissioners, thank you for having me. I'm here to present the tree removal variance for ENV-8637-2020. This variance is located at the 105 North Summit Ave Apartment Building, known as Lark Ken Apartments. The site is located in the CBD Central Business District. This property was built in 1962, prior to the requirement of site planning, so there is no active site plan for this location. The applicant Larry Lund, owner of the Lark Ken Apartment, has submitted the tree removal permit application, the tree permit, three dash two two seven eight nine dash two zero two zero, was received. On September 15th, 2020, this tree has been presented, present on the site dating back to 1970. This is illustrated by the 1970 black and white aerial. So as you can see in the image, in the aerial, it's present under the circle that is red. Upon review, staff noted that the requested tree, a red oak, required an environmental variance for permit approval due to the diameter at breast height measurement of 42 inches. City staff visited the site upon inspection. It was noted, the tree had a fungal root rot and hypoxylin canker. The presence of these pathogens indicate a significant hazard presented by wood strength loss. This is on page 20. So in the picture, you can see more than 80% of the canopy has died back, and kind of halfway up the tree is a gray looking canker. You can see that is kind of indicative of the hypoxylin canker, which is congestive heart failure for a tree, if that helps put it into perspective. Based on our findings, in accordance with Section 2212, trees greater than 30 inches of diameter breast height require a variance for removal granted from either Planning Commission or City Council. The applicant has submitted a variance justification request for the removal of the subject tree. Staff supports the submitted justification. The findings are as follows. This request will not confer a special privilege to applicant based on the determination that the tree is in poor condition. The quest does not arise from a condition relation to land or building use on a neighboring property. The request arises due to the declining condition of the tree. And state quality standards will not be violated, and there will be no measurable degradation in water quality. Are there any questions before I give the recommendations?
Commissioners, anything?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission make a motion to grant the requested variance for ENV-8637-2020, removal of a 42 inch red oak at 105 North Summit Ave, finding it in conformance with Section 2212 of the City Code and based upon the findings presented in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I probably should have asked Brian if there was anybody who had their hand up from the public to comment on this application.
We do have members of the public here at this time, so if you'd like, I can play the video demonstrating how they can indicate that they want to make a comment.
Oh, okay, sure. Thank you.
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom, and you're on a desktop or a laptop, and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raised hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay.
And we do not currently have anyone who's raised their hands, sir.
Nobody? Okay. So Bridget, we probably should have asked for that testimony before your major recommendation, but it all worked out okay anyway. So Commissioners, any issues with the, with the application? Okay, seeing no, nobody worried about it. Okay. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I moved that the Planning Commission grant the requested variance for ENV-8637-2020, removal of 42 inch diameter red oak at 105 North Summit Ave, finding it in conformance with Section 2212 of the City Code and based upon the findings presented in the staff report.
Second?
Okay, it's moved in second. Commissioner Wessel?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good luck to the applicant.
Welcome, Bridget.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to our one site plan tonight, and that's for ASDP-8610-2020, 700 Quince Orchard Road. This is a change in use to permit integrated light manufacturing and increase in building habitable space with conversion of the first floor parking previously approved to, to this new, new use. In the MXD Mixed Use Development Zone, this is an amendment to the schematic development plan, excuse me, not a site plan, but schematic development plan. And presenting from staff, I think, is Greg, right? Are you going to present?
That is correct.
Okay.
So as you noted, this is a public hearing for amendment to schematic development plan ASDP-8610-2020. Nancy Regland of Sherman, of Schulman Rogers submitted the application for the property located at 700 Quince Orchard Road. The subject property is accessible from Quince Orchard Road. The zoning on the property is mixed use, mixed use zoning. And if the tech team can bring up page 47, please. The scope of this application is to increase the total square footage of the building up to 180,000 square feet by converting the first floor parking garage back to habitable space, adding integrated light manufacturing to the list of permitted uses, minor architectural elevation revisions related to the proposed conversion, and an associated parking waiver. The proposed amendment is necessary to facilitate a new biotechnology tenant associated with Operation Warp Speed, which is of critical public interest. This application comes before the Planning Commission as a public hearing pursuant to Section 24-198(c) of the City Code. Following a courtesy review that was presented to the Mayor and City Council on September 21st, the council deemed that the application has a minor effect and directed staff to have the amendment referred to the Planning Commission to make a final decision on the application. The hearing was duly advertised in the October 1st and October 8th issues of the Washington Post, and the property was property, property was properly posted. There are currently 18 exhibits in the record file, and all exhibits are referenced in the exhibit list. All the individual exhibits may be reviewed during the course of the meeting on the city's webpage, or at the Planning and Code Administration Office during regular business hours. Any objections to any exhibit should be noted prior to the closing of the record, otherwise they will be deemed received into evidence. Since this is a minor amendment and necessary to facilitate a new biotechnology tenant associated with Operation Warp Speed, staff is recommending that the commission both close the record and take final action on this application during tonight's meeting. A draft resolution has been included and is ready for final action should the commission so choose. Here tonight to present the amendment and answer any questions you may have is the applicant, Nancy Regland. And the tech team can go to the next page, please. And Nancy, you may be muted.
So my name is Nancy Regland. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Schulman Rogers, and I'm the applicant. I am land use counsel to a biotechnology company that's interested in occupying the entirety of the newly renovated biotech building at 700 Quince Orchard, which has been rebranded as Bio at 700 Quince Orchard. So this application is to align the zoning entitlements with the tenants' requirements for their proposed operations at the building, with a strong emphasis on fulfilling their objectives under the receipt of federal funding that they got under program Operation Warp Speed. And as you may know, Operation Warp Speed is part of the federal strategy to accelerate the development, manufacture, and distribution of COVID-19 vaccines, therapeutics, and diagnostics. And they do that by having the federal government make investments in manufacturing capacity in order to give the private firms confidence to invest aggressively in the development and manufacture of the countermeasures to combat COVID-19 in 2021. So 700 Quince Orchard is very compelling building for our client, as this is a newly renovated biotech building that aligns with our client's very high sense of urgency and timeframe to occupy the facility in 2021. And that's why a decision tonight by the planning board is so important, so that the tenant can move quickly forward with final zoning approvals and permits for this building, so that it can occupy as early in 2021 as possible. We've benefited from a very strong collaboration with the ownership of 700 Quince Orchard, that's Rock Creek Quince Orchard, and their land use counsel Barbara Sears and Phil Hummel, the attorneys who took this property through its prior approvals, and have assisted this team in filing and providing their full consent and support of this application. So next slide, page 49, please. So this application, this applicant's requesting three minor modifications to the existing schematic development plan. So as Mr. Mann said, we're re-converting the first floor back to its original condition as habitable space. So we're taking approximately 45,000 square feet in order to increase the existing usable area of the building from 135 to 180. And the sketch plan permits up to 400,000 gross square feet of commercial space on this site, so this request is in conformance with the sketch plan. We're also asking to add integrated light manufacturing use to the current approved uses of office and research development laboratories which are on the site. Integrated light manufacturing is one of the list of approved uses under the sketch plan. It just needs to be approved by the Planning Commission for this site specifically, as an addition to office and research and development, and the tenant intends to do a mix of all three uses on site. To provide the commission background specific to the integrated light manufacturing that will be conducted on site, the tenant operations are focused on nanoparticle technology, which is produced in clean room facilities with environmental monitoring in place, resulting in no visible evidence of manufacturing outside of the building. And the definition of integrated light manufacturing under the city zoning ordinance specifically includes molecular engineering and nanotechnology, so the tenant's use conforms right in line with the definition. Our third and final request under the MXD zone is for the Planning Commission to approve a parking ratio that is consistent with the new mix of uses that will be conducted in this biotech building for office, research, and development, and manufacturing. We are requesting a parking ratio of one space for every 470 gross square feet occupied. And the tenant is proposing to satisfy the parking needs for 700 Quince Orchard on the building's surface parking lot and off-site across the street at the adjacent property at 14 First Field Road. And we'll go in more in-depth on parking in just a minute. So if you look at this plan that is on this slide, we are showing what is basically the exact same site plan and footprint as previously approved and has been already built. But there is one area that is circled in red on the Quince Orchard face of the building. This area is the current driveway entrance into the first floor parking garage. This driveway will be filled in with additional green space, and the garage entrance will be replaced with glass to match the building facade. Next, next slide, please, page 50. So here, we've provided for you this comparison of the three requests against what is currently approved. So again, increasing from 135 gross square feet to 180,000 gross square feet simply by re-converting the first floor back to habitable space, adding integrated light manufacturing to the two existing uses, office and R&amp;D, and then increasing the total parking from 305 spaces on-site to a total of 383 spaces, both on-site and off-site. So next slide, please, 51. So let's look at the proposed architectural changes to the building. So architecturally, the top is the existing building, and the bottom is the proposed. So architecturally, the garage vents have been changed to clear story windows along the entirety of the first floor. And the garage entrance has been filled in with glass, and you can see that on the far right side of this building. So architecture will be finalized at final site plan, but as you can see, we're doing very few modifications to the building, so we expect the final modifications to be minor. So next slide, please, 52. So I've given you here a close-up of the garage change. So this shows a detailed comparison of the as-built on the top with the garage roll-down door, and then on the bottom, the floor-to-ceiling glass addition once we convert the first floor back to its original condition of habitable space. And this will result in a great addition of natural light into the occupied space that will be created on the first floor. So next slide, please, 53. So if we're ready, let's start talking about parking. What I've provided here is the parking summary that is on the plan, and it's the data table. So let's start on the third row down in the middle. It says total number of spaces, 383. Okay? We are proposing adding 78 additional parking spaces to serve 700 Quince Orchard once the first floor is renovated and the three uses, office, R&amp;D, and manufacturing are occupying the building. The prior approved final site plan for office and R&amp;D use only was approved for a parking ratio of one space for every 428 gross square feet. So under the city zoning ordinance, the parking ratio for manufacturing is significantly less. It's one space per thousand gross square feet. So even though the square footage of the building is increasing, the increase is generally for the manufacturing use, which is a very low parking demand use. So how did we come up with a blended rate of one space per 470 gross square feet? So the tenant is anticipating about 20% of the building, or about 34,000 gross square feet, to be manufacturing space. So when we take 180,000 gross square foot building, if 80% of the space is office and R&amp;D, that's 144 gross square feet. And if we apply the parking ratio with the city has already approved for office and R&amp;D, which is one space per 428 gross square feet, then that 80% of the building requires 336 spaces. Then if we look at the 20% of the 180,000 square foot building, that's 36,000 gross square feet, which if we apply the city parking rate of one space per thousand, then the manufacturing space requires 36 spaces. So 336 spaces for office and R&amp;D, plus 36 spaces for manufacturing, is a total parking demand of 372 spaces. But we didn't stop there with our analysis. This number was checked against the landlord's minimum parking requirement for the building, which they determined to be 383 spaces. Then this number was also checked against the tenant's operational requirements. They anticipate moving 350 employees into this building in 2021. So this applicant chose 383 spaces, which is more than the blended rate from the city's parking ratio, but meets the landlord's requirements and also meets the tenant's requirements. So in addition, we know that, one, there are 33 additional on-street spaces that are not included in this 383 space number. We also know, number two, that under the off-site parking easement, which we will discuss in detail in a minute, that there is an ability to construct a parking structure to replace the off-site surface spaces with the ability of the tenant to control how many spaces that are built into that future garage. And three, that the owner of 700 Quince Orchard also has approvals already for an additional structured parking garage in 700 on its site to add additional spaces in the future if they need it for a future change in use on 700. So there are multiple ways that if the parking need increases for this building, that they will be able to, the tenant or the owner will be able to increase. So why does the applicant believe that for the foreseeable future, that the mix of uses will continue to support the 383 parking space number? So first, the tenant's initial term of the lease would be 15 years with renewals. And two, in this corridor, there is an incredible demand for life science lab and manufacturing space, as this industry sector continues to grow in the county. So we do not anticipate that once this building is built out for lab and manufacturing space, that it will convert back to a simply higher parking demand use such as 100% office. So the proposed blended rate of one space per 470 square feet is appropriate, we believe, for this new mix of uses based on the tenant's experience at its other facilities, and has been landlord-approved at this rate based on its experience in this industry, and most particularly in this specific geographic area. So these numbers will be finalized at site plan, and based on the proposed renovations of the first floor of 700 Quince Orchard, we do expect to eliminate the 105 spaces that are in the garage on-site. And we are also reserving an area of the size of about 14 or 15 more surface spaces on 700 Quince Orchard for this, the tenant's generators, which are mission-critical to their operations. So at final site plan, what we are really expecting is that there will be about 185 spaces on-site, and about 198 spaces across the street off-site. And so the on-site and off-site spaces should be, you know, in the end fairly split between the two. So if we look at this chart, I want to explain to you why we noted in the first line that the surface spaces are 158 on-site, and why we're showing 225 spaces which are located off-site on the adjacent property. So since this application includes a request to permit off-site parking, we are showing 225 spaces off-site, which is the maximum number of off-site spaces. So we are showing in the SDP the maximum off-site spaces here in this data table. And if the maximum number of off-site spaces are 225, we are showing in this table the minimum number of spaces on-site, which is simply 383 spaces, less the 225 off-site equals 157 on-site. And as we said, we expect these numbers to be finalized at final site plan, and we expect actually to come back with a more balanced numbers between on-site and off-site at that time. So in addition, we include in this table a reminder that there are 33 spaces on-site right in front of this building, and they've already been built on the proposed segment of, the, the segment of proposed Public Street A, which is right in front of the front door of this building. And the, these 33 spaces are not included in the 383 that the applicant has provided. These are additional. So let's talk a little bit about the parking easement, which has already been negotiated between the owner of 700 Quince Orchard and the owner of 14 First Field for use of up to 225 spaces. So if we'll go to the next slide, which is 54. So where will the off-site spaces be located? So the prior approvals for 700 Quince Orchard already included an interim conditions plan to use the existing parking lot that used to serve 700 Quince Orchard before they converted their first floor into garage, to use that existing surface parking lot across the street on 14 First Field. So you can see the existing striped lot is to the top of the screen, and 700 Quince Orchard is to the bottom, and you can see the front door fronts right onto this surface lot. Next slide, please, 55. So this is the exhibit to the parking easement, and it shows the initial off-site parking area under the parking easement agreement. And it's been outlined in red, and the crosshatched areas that are highlighted in yellow are the access easements to get from the parking easement area to the public street connections, both on Quince Orchard and also to First Field. So the parking area has been designed to be located to allow the owner of 14 First Field to start its redevelopment work on both the remainder of the site, and also do all of its necessary utility work around the edges of the site before there is a need to relocate the parking area. And the agreement allows the relocation of the parking area from time to time to accommodate development on 14 First Field, and it includes the permanent relocation into a shared parking structure with future development on 14 First Field. So next slide, 56. So we believe that the proposed amendments to the schematic development plan are minor and consists, are consistent with the current sketch plan. And the proposed uses complement each other both internally and within the greater immediate area composed of the First Field Employment Corridor and NIST. And our proposed plan provides accommodation for parking appropriate for the new mix of uses. The sketch plan required the submission of design guidelines for the 700 Quince Orchard building, and the minor architectural modifications are consistent with the Block 1 design guidelines. And I think, as you can see, that the changes will blend seamlessly with the already renovated facade. The proposed amendment will permit occupancy of a newly renovated but still vacant building in the city, and the expansion of biotechnology uses in the city. The amendment complements the already robust life science cluster within the First Field Shady Grove submarket, and will enhance the economic growth in the corridor. So this amendment is in the public interest, not just locally, but to the greater global public health interests and the federal strategy to deliver on its mission under Operation Warp Speed to combat the COVID-19 pandemic. The tenant anticipates filing a final site plan immediately, and basically as soon as possible after an amendment to the schematic development plan is proposed, which is why we ask that it be approved tonight, with the goal to be able to pull permits to build out and occupy this building as soon as possible. And so you will see us again very soon for the final site plan. As discussed, the need for speed in each step of the process is critical, and we respectfully request the record closed this evening and the Planning Commission vote tonight on our application. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And our team is here tonight to answer any questions that the commission has. And so we thank you for our consideration of our request.
Thank you for the presentation. I, I, I will say, I um, I appreciate the detail you went into on the parking calculations. Um it may have seemed um a little um, a little detail, more detail than what we've heard, but I did have a conversation with staff about um being certain that whatever was being proposed was, was solidly based and had some, some good, good um, good logic behind it, especially since we will be moving forward potentially with a um with a resolution for approval and I want to make sure that we have the, the criteria um decently worked out. If there's anybody in the public that wants to comment on this application, now would be the time um to hit that little raise your hand button. And I'll ask um Brian if he's seeing any, any indication that the public is interested in um commenting.
There are two members of the public present and neither of them have indicated that they wish to speak, sir.
Okay, very good. Um and then I'll also ask if anybody in the commission has any questions for the applicant's team. Sure, Lloyd.
Yes, thank you, Chair and John Bauer. Uh question regarding the uh current cut-through for the driveway that goes into the garage on the bottom. Uh you noted that there'd be glass, a glass wall put in that spot where the gate is now. Will you be uh paving over that cut-through and then what? Any landscape plans or any uh walkway in front of the glass to make it harmonious and continuous?
Yes, so we are planning to fill in that area with green space. Like right now at the SDP level, all you see is that it's filled in. Uh so the sidewalk will be continuous around the building, the sidewalk, which is already there from the parking lot to the uh garage entrance will continue. Uh and at final site plan, we'll know uh what sort of entrance that might be, whether it's just a glass wall or whether it actually is a employee entrance, which most likely it will be.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Yeah, this is Danny.
Hey Danny.
I have a question about, um, and I guess I'm not sure where I'm jumping the gun a little bit, but the um, the parking arrangement, agreement between seven hundred Quince Orchard and fourteen First Field. Um, does that have, what's the, what's the timeframe for that? Is it in perpetuity? What, what, how, how is that, how does, how was that figured out?
Yeah, so it's in perpetuity because this building will require um to have its parking uh needs requirements met. So it's in perpetuity, which is why it's written in such a way to give lots of flexibility so that it's not a barrier to redevelopment of fourteen First Field.
Right, so if that changes, then, then that arrangement, that agreement has to change then, right?
No, so uh, so that will be in existence. There will be up to two hundred and twenty-five spaces on fourteen First Field. Um but it's designed in such a way, so the ultimate goal is eventually to get the off-site spaces into a shared parking uh garage to minimize the amount of land that these spaces take up. So that's the ultimate goal.
Okay, thank you. But, and then, so um given that, that right now you, you're saying that the, the um, the build-out is a hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet?
Yeah, so um, you know, the numbers are all different. The SDP approves a hundred and thirty-five. The site plan approved like a hundred and twenty-five, but.
Right, but then, then it's up to four hundred later if you want it.
So the sketch plan, when it got approved, there were three blocks and all of the commercial space was allocated to this block one and to block three, which is where the M and T bank is.
Right, right.
Next door.
Right, next door.
And then it was proposed for residential. So that's why I'm saying this is, even though we're increasing the square footage of the building just internally, it's, it's in conformance with the sketch plan, which allowed up to a, a hundred and, I mean, four hundred thousand, so. So we're not violating the sketch plan.
Yeah, yeah, you're not violating it, but I mean, I guess if it gets to that point, then we'd have to revisit this whole schedule of parking?
Yeah, well, no, so the one thing that I want to also explain about the hundred and eighty thousand square feet is that's what we've put down for this SDP because, you know, we haven't done final architectural design on this building. And the building actually itself contained as it is today, as built, has a hundred and seventy-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-five square feet in it. Like as built, but if we want to bump out a, a front door with a double entrance, you know, connection or like I, just some minor architectural things to these entrances, I didn't want to have to have to come back to go through the SDP. So we actually increased this to a nice straight number of a hundred and eighty thousand square feet. But when we come back, the building is going to be somewhere around a hundred and seventy-seven thousand four sixty-five, maybe a few square feet beyond that based on some entrances, that's it.
Okay, okay. I mean, and I, I know this building was built in the seventies, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, no good deed goes unpunished because, you know, Rock Creek just renovated this building and put the garage in and we come down the street and we're just gonna turn it back into habitable space, so. But it's basically the same building, so kudos to Rock Creek for having done such a beautiful job on the building.
And I think, I think to sort of paraphrase the, the condition that things are in, despite the fact that um y- you referred to the parking as across the street or off-site.
Yeah.
The reality is the adjacency and the, and the relative proximity of the parking is very much what it's been ever since the beginning, ever since the building was built. It just happens that a new development configuration has added a street that bifurcates that and ownership structures and things like that are gonna separate, or, or I should say tenant, tenant arrangers are gonna separate that. But as a practical matter, for the average person coming to the site to work there, it'll be very much like it's always been. And then it may get disrupted in, in, in a few years when that site's redeveloped and they have to do the structured parking and they're displaced for some short period until, till the structured parking replaces all of that parking that's there now. I think, you know, it's, it's relatively straightforward. I appreciate the calculations more because we, we over the, over time have look at parking calculations as a function of building square footage more than anything else.
Right.
And when somebody wants to propose one per four twenty-eight versus one per four seventy versus, you know, there's really, there's not a lot of difference frankly. And so because you, you don't want to just be um careless and, and cavalier about it, it's good when there's at least a justification behind it, like a, like a tenant mix or, or something like that. So I really appreciate you did that. I think is in terms of overall impact of the site plan, it's almost nothing, or it's, it's negligible in a way.
That's our position too, and you know, for the parking, we took the total parking number and backed ourselves up into your number, the way you quote parking ratios. That's how we came up with one per four seventy.
Sure. Uh anybody else have any?
Well, John, I just, I did wanna just echo what you said and just say, I really appreciate the, the, the detail, yet albeit a little convoluted parking discussion.
It's always hard when you don't have it already.
It was like my first day calculus in, in, in my twelfth grade of college, I'm in high school, so. Thank you very much for, for that flashback.
It's, I, I just have one question. I mean, I have no issue with really with, with what's being proposed here, especially in an interim condition. My recollection is that in one of the previous iterations of, of approvals that we went through, there was a proposal for structured parking between the front of the building and Quince Orchard Road on this site. Is that still something, I mean, obviously if you're trying to get this done quickly, throwing up a parking garage is not something you do quickly. Um but is that something in, in the calculus of this sort of site planning exercise that is still on the table, or has that shifted to be, you know, if structured parking happens, it's gonna happen where there's a parking lot on the adjacent lot?
So let me address that because this application's been put forth by the tenant. So we've only asked for the changes that this tenant wants to the schematic development plan and the site plan. So we have not done anything to disrupt any approval that the owner of the building has. So they still have that approval for the additional uh parking structure on the front of Quince Orchard. I mean, at this point, for what we know, I mean, we're just signing a lease and moving in. I mean, this tenant has no intention of building that parking structure. They have a need for speed. They want to be on that surface parking and, and then they eventually want to go into a shared parking structure. Um so we haven't disrupted that. It's still on the table. But, so it's a relief valve is what I would say if there's a need for additional parking, but it's not anything this tenant is intending to implement.
That, that makes sense. That, that whole discussion will be driven as part of whatever the planning is for that adjacent block and the redevelopment.
Correct.
So, okay.
Good question.
That's all I had.
All right, anybody else? No? Okay, um Greg, what is the recommendation, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Brian, was anybody on, uh in the public interested in, um speaking?
No one has currently indicated that they wish to speak, sir.
Okay, thank you. So Greg, um your recommendation, please.
Yes, um so like, like I said, stated earlier, um staff is recommending that the planning commission close the record for application ASDP eight-six-one-zero dash twenty-twenty um and proceed to final action tonight. Um and also staff is recommending the planning commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record and the findings of the staff analysis, approve amendment to schematic development plan ASDP dash eight-six-one-zero dash twenty-twenty and grant approval of associated parking waiver and adopt the draft resolution with four conditions.
Okay, any questions um on the conditions, commissioners? No? Um, I um, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't go ahead and close the record and approve this tonight. Does, does anybody else have any reservations about this? It, it's both a very sound um proposal, modest proposal for, for changing the existing approved plan and, and also a very unnecessary and welcome um activity in the city. So um if, if nobody has any further comment, and I'll look up and see if anybody.
I'll, I'll just, I'll just endorse uh the plan and say, it's great. Obviously this use has a, has a superhero's cape on it, so.
Right.
Hesitate to sort of criticize, but I also um think it's a great use, you know. It's, it's an overparked site uh frankly uh for the use uh and all um sort of analysis aside, uh it's still going to be overparked. Uh so uh using existing uh infrastructure, you know, existing building, existing utilities, existing space uh for a more productive use uh and letting that parking sprawl back out to where we can eventually structure it and share it uh is, I think, wonderful, you know, so don't have to build new space, don't have to, you know, torture ourselves over a long approval process and we get a functioning business to come into the city in a record time is fantastic.
And I like how you're keeping smart growth principles alive when everybody else has forgotten them. Thank you, Matt.
Your role.
Well, and, and I just wanted to, to add, to add what Matt said and and it, I mean, this is absolutely for the greater good with all that's going on with the pandemic. We're, we're hoping that you come in and, and you, like Matt said, you have big gigantic cape on and you come out with a vaccine that's gonna save us all.
All right, very good. Um any other comments, commissioners? Anything else? No? Okay, um with that, we have a um first, we need a motion to, I, well, let me think. Uh let me ask, Greg, are we doing it all in one fell swoop or do we close the record first?
Um I would defer to uh Frank, but I think you can close the record first and then do another motion to approve it.
I would go ahead and close the record and then just to keep it clean.
Commissioners, there are a motion to close the record on um ASDP eight-six-one-zero dash twenty-twenty.
So may.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Uh Commissioner Kaufman?
Hi.
Commissioner Wessel?
Hi.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Hi.
Commissioner Winborn?
Hi.
I'll vote I as well. The record is closed. That is voted, or excuse me, that passes unanimously. The record is closed. Um next up would be a motion to um approve the um uh modifications to schematic development plan and the parking waiver. Is there a motion?
Hey, can I, can I ask a question before we do that? Is, do we need to actually read these conditions? I mean, or we just, we'll just read them into, we'll just have them in the record, right?
They're in the records, so you can refer.
Okay, we don't need to read them. Okay, I would like to recommend that the planning commission, based on the evidence.
Let me stop you, Danny. You're making a motion. There's no recommendation.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right, I'm making a motion that the planning commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record and the findings in the staff analysis, approve amendment to schematic development plan ASDP dash eight-six-one-zero dash two-zero-two-zero and grant approval of associated parking waiver and adopt the draft resolution with the four conditions.
Second.
It's been moved in the seconded. Uh Commissioner Kaufman?
Hi.
Commissioner Wessel?
Hi.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Hi.
Commissioner Winborn?
Hi.
And I'll vote I as well. That passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. Good luck. Um and thank you for bringing this project forward. It's exciting, exciting to see this in the city.
Thank you very much on behalf of my client and you are going to see us very soon.
Looking forward to it. Thank you. Have a good evening. All right, Brian, we can switch on and off pains now, I think. Um and that takes us to, from the commission. Um let me just scroll down on my, my agenda. From the commission, indeed it does. Um Lloyd, anything tonight?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right, Phil, anything tonight?
Nothing for me.
I appreciate seeing your new welding rig in action. That was. Matt, anything tonight?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Well, Danny, take it away.
All right, I just want to remind my colleagues that the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association, of which I'm in my last year as president, is holding its thirty-seventh annual conference and it's going to be a virtual conference. And the greatest, the biggest draw to it this year is it's absolutely free because it's virtual. It'll be held on November ninth and I would urge you all to, to register if you can, even if you can't come to all the sessions to, to, to register for the session. You can go to the Maryland Department of Planning website and at the bottom of the um, their page, their front page, you'll see a link to the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association page and then you can register there and it's very easy to register. Um I do want to remind you that our esteemed um, um colleague Frank Johnson will be presenting and Kirk Eby will be presenting as well at the virtual conference. So I, I hope that you all can join us for at least a portion of it. If you have any questions, by all means, give me a, a holler, you know, send me an email or a text. But I'm.
If it's all virtual, how are we gonna get all that cool swag in the?
I know, you know what? We talked about that and I, I, I wanted to do um masks with the MPC logo on it. But then they, they shot me down because they said we gotta mail them out and that's gonna be a big expense, but we'll see what can happen.
Well, thank you for working with them. This is, this is your last year uh on the board as president of the.
Yeah, I'll be president, but I'll, I'll just move to another position. There's not that many people, so we just rotate around.
Yeah. Well, thank you for doing that. That's great that, that you, you are doing it, but you're also representing the city at the state level. That's.
Yes, thank you so much for saying that.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll log in and uh and, and get ourselves signed up and be clapping virtually for you.
Just give me some raspberries or whatever.
Oh, no. All right, um so I now, I guess we'll go from staff. Um Greg, what's up tonight?
Um just a couple of dates to remind you about. Um there's a joint public hearing scheduled for November sixteenth. Um I believe we've heard from all of you at this time, so just a reminder. Um and then the next planning commission meeting is on November fourth. And that's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you, Greg. And I think we're gonna connect up tomorrow on the resolution, right, for a signature?
That is correct.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Schlecking, how are you this evening?
I am well. How are you, Chairman Bauer?
Thanks for joining us. Did you, do you have any news or updates or?
Well, I do. I think most of this, you already have been informed by um Rob Robinson. But uh as you know, the Lake Forest Master Plan public outreach is in full swing. We're led by the long-range planning team of Rob Robinson, Kirk Eby and Laura Mahfoud, with a lot of assistance from Tom Lonergan and Sharon Disk, as well as our Public Information Office. And um um for the benefit of the public, I did want to let you know that the survey is still open. Um so far, we have over three thousand responses. That's our online survey. A paper survey was also mailed out to over seven thousand addresses and we received our first uh mailed response today. Um so far, we have had seven focus group meetings. Um eight more are scheduled and I think there's a few more to be scheduled. Um the one today was amazing. It was with a dozen teenagers. Um this is uh kind of our, part of our equity outreach. We're, we're kind of mixing it up with different groups and um uh we had about a dozen twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds with great ideas about what to do with Lake Forest Mall. All these minutes from these focus groups are gonna be posted online. Um and then I'd also want to let everybody know that there are six general public forums scheduled for Thursday, October twenty-ninth and then November fifth as well. And um on each of those days, they will be between ten and twelve, two and four, and six-thirty to eight-thirty. They're open to the general public. Um and um uh people should be directed to our Lake Forest project page on our website to sign up. Um, so we're pretty excited about what's going on and uh, keeping really busy too.
That, that's fantastic. And I started hearing those numbers about um, the amount of, or the number of respondents on the, on the online and then the, the, the breadth and depth of the focus groups. It's pretty impressive and, and there should be some really good information emerging from all that.
I think so. We're, we're, you know, we're gearing up to a joint uh work session on December fourteenth.
Right.
It probably hasn't gotten on your radar screen yet, but it will very soon.
Okay.
If it's three to four hundred thousand dollars worth of consulting fees, would be my guess. So that's, that's money well saved and, and done by the actual professionals. It's really great.
Yeah, that's right. Excellent. All right, well, thanks very much. Uh, Frank, anything tonight?
No, I would just say, I'm not sure I would uh refer to myself as esteemed um, as Danny did, but I would say Kirk is at least as esteemed as I and we're both both happy to participate in the uh, planning uh, Planning Commissioner Association uh training on November ninth.
Great, thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
All right, I'll, if there isn't, if nobody has anything else, I'm not seeing any, oh wait, okay. Um, you all have a good evening. We're adjourned.